I'd like to call the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors PM meeting this Thursday, October 16th, 2025, at 6:30 PM to order. I want to remind everybody, a recording device will be in use during the meeting. Let's open the meeting with a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment for agenda items. I want to remind everybody that rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allocated to each individual making any comments shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Is there any public comment on agenda items? Seeing none, I would like to move on to the minutes of previous meetings. I was not here, so somebody has to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to note that I did not vote?
Yep.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Treasurers' report authorization to pay bills and approve payroll. I have looked at the bills, the deposits, and I will make a motion to accept the treasurer's report, authorize the bills to be paid, and approve the payroll.
I'll second.
Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Township manager report.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have no report this evening and therefore yield the balance of my time to the assistant township manager who does so.
Thank you, members of the board. I just had one update in my report and then a couple of events I just wanted to announce. The first thing, two weeks ago, members of the Budget Committee and I toured the total recycle facility in Berthsborough where East Brandywine Township's recycling is processed. The visit provided valuable insight into the recycling process from collection to sorting to resale and helped us identify opportunities to spread awareness to the public on proper recycling practices. After the tour, we updated the township's recycling webpage to include helpful tips, current process capabilities, and contamination guidelines. Additionally, we created a separate page titled "What Do Your Recyclables Become?", and this was created to show how certain recyclable items are reused after they're sorted and processed. And you'll see two examples underneath with the screenshot of images. And lastly, what we're doing to help spread more awareness about recycling education is we submitted an article to the mile marker, which summarizes these updates and key takeaways from the tours. In addition to that, we have some events coming up. On October 19th at 3:00 PM, the Historical Commission is doing their speaker series. It is Historic Bridges of Chester County: Preserving Our Legacy. That'll be here at the Township Building. Additionally, the Historical Commission is having another speaker series on November 16th at 3:00 PM. It is Historic Land Patterns: The Functional Architecture of Our Agricultural Landscapes will also be at the Township Building. And then just a reminder, the week of October 27th and the week of November 10th is fall leaf collection. So residents, just make sure you have your leaves placed curbside Monday of each scheduled week. But that is all I have, members of the board.
Thank you. Donut inspectors' report. Is there someone here listening?
I'm happy to read that into the record, Mr. Chairman.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. For September 2025, a total of 38 building permits were issued. There were three zoning permits issued. Fees collected for building and zoning permits was $45,647.69. There were a total of 27 use and occupancy permits issued. 211 inspections were completed, of which there were nine failed inspections. Total fees collected in the period was $46,367.69. This report is respectfully submitted by Noran King, Permits Administrator.
You may not know the answer, but just in case I might ask a question. The failed inspection, were they related to one particular project or development?
I do not know the answer.
Thank you for the report. And next will be the roadmaster's report.
Derek Kloss, Foreman, Public Works. And good evening. In just over a week, we will bid farewell to our current township roadmaster, Matthew Van Lu, as he retires from his distinguished career with East Brandywine Township. Matt began his journey with us back in 1999. He has witnessed the township's remarkable growth, seeing our population more than double and our parks flourish into the beautiful spaces we all enjoy today. Throughout his tenure, Matt has played a vital role in maintaining and improving our infrastructure, always ensuring that our roads, parks, and facilities remain safe, reliable, and well-cared for. When Matt first joined the team, the Public Works Department was made up of only a handful of part-time employees. As East Brandywine's needs grew, Matt guided the department through its expansion, developing it into the robust team of five dedicated full-time employees that we have today. He has overseen the growth of our fleet and equipment, helping to lay a strong foundation that will benefit our community for years to come. On behalf of the township supervisors, staff, and the entire community, we extend our deepest gratitude to Matthew Van Lu for his 26 years of exceptional service, commitment, and leadership. Matt, thank you for everything you've done for East Brandywine Township. You have made a lasting impact, and you will truly be missed.
Thank you.
Now, we've already talked about fall leaf collection, so that is all I have for the township roadmaster's report.
That the conclusion of the report, Derek?
It is.
Mr. Chairman, you note that there is actually a new business item under Seven Beat, which is the Aspen Drive and Kristin Circle pipelining proposal. The text you see in the report here would be appropriate to return to it at that point on the agenda.
Okay, that's fine. I look for that clarification. All right. The police report. Chief.
Good evening. The police report for September 2025. With Halloween around the corner, we want to remind everyone to use extra caution when driving through our developments and watch out for the adults and children walking around trick-or-treating. Our officers will be out on Halloween night, and we will have plenty of candy to give out to the kids. With the closure of North Guthersville Road between Brookhaven and Quail Ho Roads occurring on October 20th, we have a concern about the cut-through traffic on Brookhaven and Ferndale, which we're expecting to occur, and through the shopping center during the construction project. Please be aware that our officers are going to be strictly enforcing the speed limits along Brookhaven and Ferndale during this time. One of the things that I did not have in the report that I would like to bring up is East Brandywine Township Police Department has collaborated with the Chester County Chiefs of Police Association and the Chester County Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 11 to participate in the Blue Envelope program, and that is this envelope I have in my hand. The program is designed to assist drivers with autism spectrum disorder or other communication disabilities when interacting with police during a traffic stop or other related encounter. The envelope has important information printed on it for both the police officer and the driver. Copies of the driver's license, vehicle registration, insurance card, and emergency contact information are placed inside the envelope. During an encounter, the driver presents this envelope to the police officer. The officer noticing the blue envelope has been trained to be alert to the fact that there are communication challenges that he or she needs to be aware of. Since the information we typically need on a stop is now inside the envelope, we are able to have a calm, safe, and productive interaction with the driver. So if you or someone you know could benefit from using the blue envelope, please stop by our department and pick one up. We have these located in the bins that we have alongside our police receptions window. For the month of September, the department recorded 2,509 incidents. We completed 218 investigations. The department made three criminal arrests, two summary arrests, one warrant arrest, and completed one juvenile petition. We had 15 accidents investigated by the officers. The officers issued 88 traffic citations, 30 warnings, and they logged 10,084 miles patrol. Training completed for the month. Officer Andrew DiPaolo completed Glock Armor Certification. Officer Brendan Flood completed Interview and Interrogation School. And Sergeant Juan Lemus completed a week-long SWAT recertification at Fort Dix. We have one communication that we received from resident Sally Riddle, and that was a thank you to Officer John Hayes for helping her during an incident. You have copies of the monthly investigations officer's activity report and correspondence. And I would just like to make a comment or read out something to Matt Van Lu. Matt, on behalf of myself and the entire police department, I want to take a moment to express our deepest gratitude and respect for you, for someone who's been steady and an invaluable partner to us for the last 26 years, and that is our retiring roadmaster, Matt Van Lu. For almost three decades, Matt has been more than just a department head. He has been an essential part of our public safety team. While our work is often visible, the crucial support we've received from the road department under Matt's leadership has often happened behind the scenes, but it's never gone unnoticed by us. When we think about all the incidents in which the police have gone to respond to and secure a scene, such as a downed tree road closure or a traffic light power outage, it was typically Matt and his crew who would respond out and clear the problem, making it safe again. Matt, you were always a phone call away, and you were always ready to deploy the road through day or night. Your unwavering support was a testament to your dedication to the entire East Brandywine community. Matt has been a mentor and friend to many of us here, especially myself. I'll always remember the countless hours we spent going over the design and construction documents to build this facility, working with you to fix all the problems on the police side and other issues throughout the building over the years, and just talking about life in general sometimes when we had the chance to do that. You are a true friend, and I greatly appreciate the friendship we had. So Matt, as you begin your new chapter, we want to wish you a long, happy, and healthy retirement. You've more than earned it, and we wish you the best in your new adventures. Thank you. I also want you to know that I wrote in your card that I don't want you to become one of these pesky residents calling us to find out what your road's going to be. Congratulations, man.
And next would be the fire company, and we have a fire chief here.
Good evening. We had 95 total incidents for the month, 54 fire calls, 41 medical calls. We had 29 fire and 23 medical calls in East Brandywine, 15 fire, 16 medical calls in West Brandywine, four fire calls, and two medical calls in Upper East Brandywine. We've had an average personnel response of 10 and 14 for major incidents. We used 220.6 East Brandywine Township fuel, 51.3 of West Brandywine Township fuel, for a total of 271.9 gallons for the month. No fire damage, and we had three trainings with an average number of personnel of 19 for a total of 122 total training hours. We've got two more things, and I can't remember if I brought it up the last meeting, but the new rescue truck is in service, and it has taken in over 10 calls already. I think it's on 12 now, but I know it's over 10, so it's hit the ground running since it's been in service. And last night, we had our open house, which is, it seems like every year it does better and better, and it's a huge success for the community, and we estimated to be about 600, 600 to 700 people in attendance last night, so it was a big hit. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And the ambulance ambulance report.
Good evening. So September was another busy month for us. Pro-Vine's still continuing its upward trend compared to last year. Despite this increase in demand, we've been holding steady at our operating capacity with employees and coverage, maintaining that 60-hour coverage during the daytime, which is, which is great. Operationally, we saw a shift in third call to fourth call, so we're kind of keeping an eye on that. Fourth call is anything greater than three calls that we can handle during the daytime hours. Beyond emergency response, we're still out in the community. We've done, September was full of community events, community engagement, which is great. You know, not only treating people when they're sick, but seeing them smile when they're happy and healthy is always a positive of the job. Other than that, the truck that you, that the board approved the expenditure for last month is officially in service, so keep an eye out. We teamed up with East Brandywine. We decided the same day was probably the best fit, but keep an eye out for that. And again, we're graciously thankful for the continued support that supervisor staff at this township has shown us over the last two years.
Old business. Definitions review, consolidation, and review of uses by zone. Mr. Riley.
Thank you. Get the visual aid queued up. Excellent. All right. So this is an agenda item that has previously appeared before the Board of Supervisors, most recently at your Thursday, October 2nd AM meeting. Brief introduction to the draft legislation that's before you. It has been prepared by a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. The reason for the project was to look at every single zone in East Brandywine Township and look at the uses in each of those zones. The idea was to move definitions of uses from where they are now in the text of each zone, thus allowing a similar service, like retail or commercial use, to vary between zones, and move those definitions to a consolidated definition section. And then the reference to whether a use is allowed in the zone could be much smaller. You could simply have a bulleted list of all the uses allowed in a zone. So a significant part of this was examining our zones. To a lesser extent, some consideration has been given to what uses are allowed in each zone, although that was a smaller portion of the project. The lion's share of the work was consolidating the definitions. At your meeting on October 2nd, the board had a 171-page draft that had been prepared on Sunday, September 28th. Also available to the board, last time you considered this, were the Planning Commission chairman's comments of Monday, October 1st. There were also observations, there was an error in the zoning table identified by the chairman of this board on Wednesday, October 2nd. None of those changes have been incorporated into the draft that's before you this evening. At the October 2nd meeting, the board tabled a decision on what would have been the action item, which was refer the draft to Chester County Planning Commission for Act 247 review so that everyone would have more time with the 171-page draft. So here we are, two weeks later, and the action item is the same. If the board is so inclined, it would be appropriate to direct staff by a motion to refer the draft to Chester County Planning Commission for Act 247 review. I'm also happy to answer any questions that may have come up during your review period.
Let me speak first. When I first became a supervisor, this was the second most important project on my list because as a resident for 45 years and in prior years, in a different life, a builder and developer in East Brandywine, the nickname of East Brandywine was the Township of No. And I wanted to know why, and once you got into it, it's almost overwhelming, especially the definitions. What do we have? Four different definitions for retail?
Something similar, yes.
Something similar. And that's not a, that's not a bizarre, we had a lot of threes and three definitions for the same thing. So this project, although it wasn't started right away, was started pretty soon after I became a supervisor, and I hope that the board will at least move it, will keep moving it along by having a, by approving a 247 review by the county. County, which can take, what, 90 days, 45 days?
Well, they really have at least 30 days. They usually get it done within 30.
Hundreds and hundreds of hours from the subcommittee have been invested in this, so I'm interested to get the comments back from the county so that if any of them are significant, we can review them and make appropriate changes, just to keep this ball moving. I mean, it's been almost four years, so I hope we can get a positive vote. Thank you. I'm good. Thank you.
I went over the questions I had with Luc, and we're ready to move it forward.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we send definitions and zoning by.
May I recommend, Mr. Chairman, just so we can get belt and suspenses and nobody's surprised by what I send to the county? I would suggest that the motion be to forward the red line draft of September 28th, 2025, with two further incorporated revisions. One being the Planning Commission chairman's comments of Monday, October 1st, and, I'm sorry, Monday, September 29th. The 1st was the day of their meeting. And the correction to the table, which isn't a substantive change, it's just a typo into what's allowed in, for two zones, particularly fireworks and the grower/processor of medical marijuana. So not a change there, just making sure the table reflects that. So those two, this is a terrible motion. The idea is the draft plus those two sets of comments.
I got, I got three words into it, and I said, "Man, this is going to be a tough motion."
Well, it was pretty poorly worded on my part. Forward the draft of, oh my goodness. Forward the draft red line of September, can you scroll up? No, please. September 28th, 2025, with further revisions as included in Mr. Buxalla's email of Monday, September 29th, and with further amendment to the zoning uniform use table to reflect the language that is in the draft already for 247 review.
Go ahead, Doc.
If I may, Mr. Chairman. My understanding was that this table is not going to become part of the ordinance, so you should not submit this table for Act 247 review unless you put in an explanation that that's just for the convenience of the township. It will not be part of the ordinance.
Yeah, the purpose of the table is convenience for the township and so we can answer people's questions without having to go to a 700-page book.
Understood.
That makes the motion vastly easier. It's just the red line of September 28th with the Planning Commission or the Planning Commission chairman's comments of Monday, September 29th.
That's the motion I'll propose. Your second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just as an aside, it is important we keep this moving. Do you know, we allow, or we still allow until this is approved as an ordinance, we allow electrical substations in R1, so you can have yourself a beautiful two-acre homestead, and Pico can come next door and put an electrical substation in. Well, we've changed that. They can put it in down at Sanders' old towing place. So it is important, there are a lot of little things in there like that that I don't think the residents would be happy to have a substation.
I'm not worried about Pico's substation. I'm worried about them cutting 400 trees along our roads.
Well, nature's taking care of us, so. All right, thank you. All right. New business. Appointment of Robert Lopez to the Historical Commission.
Yes, so in your packets, you'll find an application form for the Historical Commission from resident Robert Lopez. Robert has attended previous Historical Commission meetings in the past, and in our last meeting last week, the Historical Commission unanimously recommended his appointment to the Historical Commission. He has a deep passion for history, specifically the history of East Brandywine Townships, East Brandywine Township, and his contributions and insights at the meetings have been welcomed by the Commission. Tonight, I wanted to reemphasize the Historical Commission's recommendation that Robert be appointed to fill the last vacancy for the Historical Commission.
Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Lopez?
I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Lopez to the Historical Commission.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And next is the Aspen Drive and Kristin Circle pipeline proposal. Derek?
Thank you. So we have recently been working on getting quotes for multiple corrugated metal pipes that are in desperate need of repair. We have received two quotes, both through credit stars. The first from Able Recon is for approximately 324 linear feet of pipe and a cost of $169,400. This would include pipes located on Kristin Circle, Raleigh, and Gloucester Drive. However, as previously noted, there are multiple pipes in the Marshall Creek Farms neighborhood, which is Aspen Drive, in need of replacement. There are approximately 415 linear feet of pipe on Aspen Drive, which we rate as a priority one for repair. Our second quote from Mr. Rehab covered 500 linear feet of pipe on Aspen Drive and Kristin Circle for a price of $155,896. The quote from Mr. Rehab omits the crosspipes on Raleigh and Gloucester Drive, and the road department intends to repair those in-house. This company has performed work for the township in 2021 on Aspen Drive as well, and we were very satisfied with the work they performed. Our current year budget has $140,000 set aside in a line item for pipelining, and in 2026, I have requested an additional $60,000 be added to that line item, bringing the total to $200,000. With the current quote, we would still be about $44,104 below the budget amount if it were approved, and would satisfy the needs of current infrastructure for three to five years. years. If accepted, the work would commence in January of 2026. I've included both quotes for your consideration, along with the list of corrugated metal pipe along Aspen Drive and their respective priority ratings. I respectfully request approval from the board to approve the quote obtained from Mr. Rehab for $155,896, sorry, with the CoStarz contract number of 016E22220. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question?
Yes.
Just for clarity, the budget request for next year was 60,000 more, bringing the total for both years to 200,000?
Correct.
Okay. We had a budget committee meeting this morning, and the current draft shows 200,000 in the next year.
Correct. We have 140 currently. The ask was for 60,000 more to be added to that.
You just made balancing our budget a little easier. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve awarding the contract for $155,896. Staple over the first. Mr. Rehab LLC for stormpipe lining.
And before we move forward, what's the total linear feet for that entire project for the 155,896?
That was 519 linear feet, I believe.
519 total?
Correct. So it's almost 200 linear feet more, and approximately $14,000 cheaper.
I'll second. And if I may, it should be subject to getting insurance certificates from the contractor.
Yes, I hope that's a normal practice, that anytime we have a contractor doing work for us, we have their, their term certificate, the certification.
Understood.
And if not, probably adding us as an additional insurer.
Right, that's where I was stumbling to come up with this. We should always be named an additional insurer. It doesn't cost the company anything to name it, to have an additional shore named. All right, any other discussion?
I'm sorry, there was a motion, and I don't know, did we get a second?
I second the motion.
Yes, we had a second.
And was there an approval?
Pardon me?
Did we, did we vote on it?
I think Tom stepped in.
Oh, yes. Another Tom, and I can't do that yet.
No, you can.
Okay. Tom, are you done with your comments?
I am.
Okay. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you.
Subdivision in zoning applications, I see non-ordinances and resolution consideration, I see not. Public comment on non-agenda items, is there any public comment on non-agenda items? You could come up here to the podium there with a little green light.
Okay. For anybody who doesn't know me, my name is Rose Jamison. I'm a township, I was a township employee for over 45 years. My position was eliminated. My last day of unemployment was October 3. I was blindsided by this, and I just have a couple of questions. So I was told my position was eliminated, and what exactly, what position was eliminated?
I would advise the board not to answer any questions in this meeting. Questions should be addressed to Mr. President during business hours.
Okay, when was my, the vote taken to eliminate my position? And what was the vote?
Again, the board's not going to respond to questions that are public.
Okay, well, I did try, and I had a discussion with Luke, but my questions weren't answered.
Pardon?
He didn't answer my questions. So I did try going through Luke. It was a simple question, what was the vote, and when was the vote taken? And why was I told by the chief and Jeff that I would be offered a package? And when I talked to Luke, he had no idea what I was speaking about, and told me I shouldn't have been told that. Again, where was the miscommunication?
Well, once again, the board is not going to discuss.
Okay, I'm not represented by an attorney.
Personnel matter.
I'm not represented by an attorney, Tom.
That's fine. I'm just stating that the board is not.
So after 24-plus years of service, I can't get a question answered? And I am also a township resident for over 50 years. So as a township resident, I can't get a question answered? Very good. Thank you. Matt, congratulations.
Notices, there will be an executive session following the conditional use hearing to discuss personnel matters. Is there a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. All those in favor?
Aye.